Meeting, that is May twenty first, twenty twenty five, can I roll call please?
Remy Dean, Remy Dean, Walter Hood.
Present.
Timothy Lockett.
Present.
Roy Mickens.
Present.
Latoya Mosley. Latoya Mosley, Willie Ray.
Present.
Latonya Sales.
Present.
Can I get your prayer? Mr. President.
I'm gonna ask everyone to stand for prayer and bow your head, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and your kindness for waking us up this morning, starting us on our way. We ask that you bless our meeting, that we arrive at good conducive financial decisions, and decision that support the board, the children, and the school. These things we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank Jesus.
Salute Jesus to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next will be adoption of agenda given to board, number discretion to take items out of order, or executive session, can I get a motion?
Second.
I make the motion.
Motion by Willie Ray, second by Walter Hood, roll call.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Mr. Lockett?
Yes.
Mr. Mickens?
Yes.
Ms. Mosley, Ms. Mosley, Ms. Sales.
Present.
Motion pass. Uh, recognition, second.
Good evening, I have several recognitions, I'm very thrilled to share with each of you. First of all, we are proud to celebrate the East St. Louis Senior High School Class of two thousand twenty five.
Yes.
This year's graduating class included three hundred and twenty-one, I believe it was seniors, um, who collectively earned over thirty, thirty-two million dollars in college scholarships. We are so thrilled, this is the largest ever. This is a tremendous accomplishment that reflects their hard work and potential. It includes, um, I believe now the total was twenty-one million dollars, over twenty-one million dollars in academic scholarships, and the remaining in.
And I think since this report, this amount may have gone to thirty-six.
Thirty-six millions, thank you very much for that.
Yeah, thirty-six million, five hundred thousand and some.
Yeah, thank you for that, it has increased since the, since the written report.
And the, uh, the academic amount is up twenty-two million.
Twenty-two million, thank you.
Yeah.
Nearly every graduate has a solid post-secondary plan, including enrollment in a two- or four-year college or university, trade or technical school, military service, or direct entry into the workforce. And some notable achievements include that six of our students earned their associate's degree from Southwestern Illinois College through the Running Start Program, while many others earned college credits through dual enrollment opportunities at the high school. And for the first time in our district history, students earned the Career Pathway Endorsement Diploma Seal. This is from the Illinois State Board of Education. The seal recognizes students who have completed a career-focused individual learning plan, instructional sequence, and work-based learning experience that prepares them for success after high school. Students earning the Career Pathway Endorsement Diploma include three construction trade graduates, where, which were in the Manufacturing Engineering Technology and Trades Career Pathway Endorsement, four welding graduates, also within the Manufacturing Engineering Technology and Trades Pathway Endorsement, as well as thirteen nursing graduates earning the Healthcare Science and Technology Pathway Endorsement. So these accomplishments showcase the diverse talents and future readiness of our students. So congratulations once again to the class of two thousand twenty-five. Over spring break, the East St. Louis Senior High School's band proudly represented our district at the Atlanta Heritage Festival. They joined choirs, orchestras, and bands from across the country to compete and receive expert instruction and feedback from naturally, I'm sorry, nationally-recognized adjudicators. And under the direction of band director Delano Redmond, the talented student musicians earned second place in the Jazz Ensemble category, delivering a powerful performance, yes.
Thank you.
That sounded good last night, too.
And for most of us who were present at the graduation ceremony last night, we got to hear a sample of that. And they were outstanding, something definitely to celebrate. Mason Clark Middle School Student Council has been recognized as a two thousand twenty-five Honor Council by the Illinois Association of Junior High Student Councils. This distinguished recognition celebrates the council's exceptional commitment to leadership, service, and school spirit through the academic year. And the council distinction is awarded to student councils across Illinois that demonstrate academics' excellence in planning and participation while fostering a positive and engaged school culture. Additionally, Mason Clark student Michael Smith was elected to serve as the Southwest District Representative for the Illinois Association for Junior High Student Councils, um, for the upcoming school year. So we definitely salute that, and his election comes as a strong, as part of a strong legacy. We have had, um, former students, including Ayanna Bennett, who previously served in that same role. And ongoing with Mason Clark, they have been honored as, with the National Beta School of Merit Award, a prestigious recognition that celebrates the school's commitment to academic achievement, leadership, and service. In order to receive this distinction, schools must have a national beta club with members enrolled in all eligible grade bands, an accomplishment that reflects the dedication and excellence of all of Mason Clark's students and staff. Additionally, on, um, April thirtieth, the southwestern region of Illinois Principals Association hosted an annual student recognition breakfast. And during that special event, we had the distinct honor of recognizing outstanding students from our school district. These students lead with humility and inspire those around them, making a lasting positive impact within their school communities. So we are proud to recognize and congratulate Mason Watson of Officer, Deonte Bunton of Avant, Krishanti Lewis from Lincoln, Aria Rensherr from Mason Clark, Kelvin Burris Junior from Mason Clark, Lorianne Green from East St. Louis Senior High, and Lawrence Powell from East St. Louis Senior High. Our Vivian Adams Early Childhood Center hosted their annual preschool spelling bee in April, and the participants did an excellent job spelling sight words in front of special guests, including family members as well as district personnel. So we congratulate the following winners and thank their teachers and families for support. First place, Sarah Wade, um, with the teacher Shelley Loomis. Second place, Ava Smoot, with the teacher being Ariel McKinney. And third place, Ticali Matthews-Hammond, her teacher is Jennifer Raisin. Many of you have also heard in the news how our school district proudly celebrates two outstanding East St. Louis Senior High School alumni who have been selected into the two thousand twenty-five NFL draft. Their achievement marks a significant milestone in their athletic as well as academic journeys and serves as an inspiration to our current and future flyers. These remarkable graduates have demonstrated exceptional talent, discipline, and perseverance throughout their high school and collegiate careers. We are proud to recognize Luther Burden, wide receiver drafted by the Chicago Bears, um, formerly of the University of Missouri, as well as Dominic Lovett, wide receiver drafted by the Detroit Lions, also from, formerly the University of Missouri, and then most recently, the University of Georgia. We also want to congratulate Sylvia Campbell Blackburn, a speech-language pathologist serving several district elementary schools for earning the Certificate of Clinical Competence in Speech-Language Pathology from the American Speech-Language Hearing Association. This prestigious national credential requires a master's degree completion of a clinical fellowship, a national exam, and ongoing professional development. And Sylvia is the first in our district to achieve this unique distinction. So it's an outstanding accomplishment that reflects her dedication to excellence and ethical practice within the field. I tried to quickly go through our recognitions tonight, I do want to highlight one other thing before I, I sit back down. In a couple moments, you will hear from one of our class of two thousand twenty-five graduates, William Cosby, who's standing right behind me here, is gonna be giving a presentation shortly. He was one of them that earned ex, um, extensive college scholarships, two point two seven million dollars in scholarships, this fine young man. And out of all of his offers, he's chosen Xavier University in Louisiana to attend. William has proudly served this year on the superintendent's Student Advisory Council at East St. Louis Senior High School, giving, um, tremendous insights and depth of, of character and just insight that he's been sharing with our administrative teams. Additionally, he served at the state level. So the Illinois State Board of Education has a Student Advisory Council, and he represented East St. Louis on that council all this year. He gave a presentation at the State Board of Education meeting last week, and so he's gonna share a portion of that with us in a few moments.
All right.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be an approval motion to, uh, the minutes of twenty, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, regular board meeting. And April twenty-ninth, first of all, can I get a motion, second?
Quick motion.
I second.
Been moved by, um, Ms. Walter Hood, second by, um, Willie Ray, roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yeah.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Mr. Lockett?
Yes.
Mr. Mickens?
Yes.
Ms. Mosley?
Motion pass.
Latoya Sales?
Yes.
The motion pass. Presentation reports.
Yes, only presentation, there are no reports, no special reports today, but we do have Mr. Cosby here with us to, uh, share, uh, some good information that he's obtained from being a part of the state board's Student Advisory Council. And he served the district and community very well, I was told.
Good job.
Good evening, is that mic on, guys? Someone check, there, it's on.
Good evening, my name is William Cosby. Last week, I presented at the Illinois State Board of Education meeting, and they asked us, what are we gonna do to take it back to our community, to help our community? So I took apart of my presentation that we presented at the state level to bring it back to the district on things that we can improve on to better help students succeed. So first, we're gonna start with AP courses. We can provide course outlines, past student perspectives on the courses, teacher introductions, AP orientations, and we can also add more courses. Students want more courses because they want to learn about other things that can better help, help them on their career pathways in college. Next slide. My promote, my proposed recommendations or student class placement should be determined using a holistic approach, teacher counselor recommendations, student input, prior academic performance, and demonstrated interest. Also, advanced courses must be made more accessible to students who show strong interest or potential, particularly for capable students who may be limited by rigorous grade level restrictions. I say this because students really don't have the opinion on AP classes because this year, I was just not told about it, I was just given two AP classes, so I feel like we can better improve on this, so students do not fail these classes or fall behind because they're taking these classes. Students impact. This proposal will empower students by giving them a greater voice in their academic journey rather than being placed in courses based on previous school year academic success. Students will be evaluated through a range of factors such as personal interest and teacher or counselor recommendations. This approach provides more equitable access to advanced coursework, especially for students who may have strong understanding of the course. Next slide. The financial impact. This proposal may require financial investment to support the transition, training for teachers and counselors on how to evaluate multiple placement criteria and update existing recommendation systems to include these new pathways as necessary. Additional support may be needed to ensure teachers and counselors have adequate time to review students' placement requests. This proposal largely builds on, on a process that already exists, so financial impact is low. Ultimately, this investment could lead to significantly higher student engagement, better course alignment, and reduce failure rates in advanced classes, making it a cost-effective way to support equitable academic outcomes. So this data right here is from the two thousand twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year Illinois report card. We had one thousand two hundred and sixty-one at Eastside Campus, eleven total AP courses, two hundred and twenty-seven enrolled in AP courses, and out of all of the students enrolled in these courses, zero percent pa, zero percent passed the AP test because these students were not ready and given this material beforehand, before they signed up for these courses. Implement a structured system that requires all students to meet individually with a school counselor to have meetings focused specifically on identifying post-secondary plans tailored to student skills, strengths, and goals. Next, we have the two thousand twenty-three, twenty twenty-four graduation rate, which is seventy, which was seventy-three point five, which is nine hundred and twenty-seven out of one thousand two hundred and one students. Next slide. Some of the things that I took back from the Illinois State Board of Education First Student Summit was, our district needs to leave more opportunities open for people to have flexibility with the whole course they're choosing, along with availability. We believe AP honors should be able to be more available for freshmen and sophomores, which they're not available for freshmen or sophomores at Eastside, and juniors in order to expand experience and opportunities for growth. Thank you, any questions?
Good job. Any, uh, comments from, uh, board members or staff? Yeah, sure.
So I just wanna, um, first thank you for offering what you just did, it takes a lot of courage to share your student perspective. It takes a lot of courage to share your student perspective.
Exactly.
And so thank you for sharing that, first of all, William. I'm Dr. Wells. I'm our Director of Instructional Support and College Readiness, and I just wanted to offer from the things that you did share, the good news is that our high school team and our councils across the district are working on these very things. Things that you mentioned about having individual plans. We have a college and career readiness team along with our councils, the academic councils at the high school. We're currently working on those plans to ensure that you do have that individual support that you mentioned that is important and you all have a voice in what's going on with your coursework. So those are things that are in the process of improving. And by July, we have to have with the state of Illinois our post-secondary framework, which is our post-secondary and career expectations framework. That's what we named what we can expect for students from grades six to twelve in our district. So we're outlining that so that a student like you will know.
Exactly what the expectations are and to be able to.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wells.
All right, next will be public comments.
One more comment, I think Ms. Brumbeck, our Chief Academic Officer wanted to.
So one thing I wanted to share is part of the limitations in the past for student choice is that they can only take six classes. Beginning next year, they can take seven. So as we're working with counselors to give students more voice in what it is that they take, we also are having more choice for students to then pursue their interests. So this was something that we were able to negotiate for this coming school year and hoping to have some good return on that. In addition, we are still sending teachers to workshops over the summer for AP courses and honors courses so that they become more familiar with the resources that are available to them, and we can also talk about upping the rigor so that students have a higher probability of scoring a three or higher on their AP exam. Thank you so much, William.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And next will be public comments on George McClellan.
What was it, Suzie?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
First thing I'd like to say is congratulations. Congratulations to the board members who actually retained their seats. Congratulations, guys. And also for those who are new on the board, Mr. Mickens. With that being said, you guys are, you're in ideal spots, ideal spots in order to change us for the next several years. One thing we want to make sure is that you have a lot of people here, some from Eastside Align, some from Love, and some from NAACP. First thing, this is not an attack, nor any derogatory comments, not any charges against you at all. It's more of an inquiry of the direction for the next steps that you guys have the ability in order to change us for the next four to five years based on the seats that you guys sit in. First thing I want to just like to.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
George.
George.
McClellan.
George McClellan here.
M C C L E L L A N.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a series of questions that I'm going to get to. That would be, mine would be the first one, okay? Yes, we're definitely excited about the scholarship opportunities that young people actually had.
Now, it'll be a series of questions. We're just going to see the presentation and move on.
Oh, okay. So the question, a series of questions?
No, it's not going to be a series of questions. It's just your presentation.
Okay.
Your comment, whatever.
Just comments.
It's not going to be.
A public comment, I think, was, a public comment is for the board and administration to listen, but we don't go into a back and forth dialogue. But we do get back with you, the administration does, and then we give the board a report of any plans or whatever was discussed when we get back with you.
So with that, didn't know it was like that, all right? The only thing I would like to know and say is that the organizations that I just mentioned, we looked in order to actually have a forum. A forum in order to, one thing, in order to just ask some questions. And we'd like in order to find out when that will be or if you guys will have something in order for the public to ask those questions to you.
Yes, the district gives, we have quarterly key communicated network meetings. The purpose of those meetings is for, the administration typically will share several items with the public, but 80% of the meeting is to get feedback and answer questions. Then there is a back and forth. Some of you have been to those meetings, but there is a back and forth dialogue between the administration and the public. And board members are invited to those meetings. Sometimes some board members come. They're not required to come, but they certainly can attend. If more than, if a quorum of the board comes, we have to post it as a board meeting, but that's quarterly, and unfortunately for this year, we've had our last one. But yourself and the groups that you've identified, we'd be more than happy to sit down with you to discuss and answer any questions that you might have, as well as share our plans with you.
Oh, absolutely. Love in order to do that.
So if you will, Ms. Kaufman, if you can make sure you get his information, and we'll make sure we connect with him and sit down and have that two-way dialogue.
Who?
Ms. Kaufman. She's going to get your information. We'll pass this along to her. I think it has your number and everything on it.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Deanna Davis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Danica Davis, and I'm here with a group called Love, leaving our voices everywhere, and I'm speaking on behalf of the youth. And my question is, as a board member, what do you see as your biggest responsibilities? And how will you stay accountable to students, parents, and educators by keeping them truly heard, included, and connected beyond just the meetings and events? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So your question, because we do want, we're not going to go into a back and forth today. And this is not just for this meeting, but I want to make sure we get your question written down. What was it again?
I said, as a board member, what do you see as your biggest responsibilities? And how will you stay accountable to students, parents, and educators by keeping them truly heard, included, and connected beyond just meetings and events?
Okay, and we have her information too. Suzie brought her question. All right, thank you. We'll be getting back with you. Yes, ma'am.
And a Tifa Ford.
Is it Shante Ford?
Ms. Coleman, Dania Coleman.
Oh, they are at the same. I guess you got to do it one at a time. It's not the same. They're different topics. So Shante Ford is here.
Good evening. My name is Shante Ford, and I serve on staff with Eastside Align, a nonprofit organization that's committed to improving outcomes for children and youth within the district. We've long had a positive relationship with District 189 and working together on different initiatives to support the success of students' well-being. Tonight, I'm here to challenge, not to challenge that relationship, but to honor it by continuing the work of alignment, transparency, and partnership. I stand with and in support of students, families, educators, community members who are seeking greater access, engagement, and collaboration with the board and district leadership. What you'll hear tonight are questions and concerns shaped directly by community, many of whom gathered this past Saturday at our Youth Lead event titled Cease Taking, Now Let's Talk Solutions. These questions are not attacks. They are invitations caused to build stronger, more accountable relationships between the district and those they serve. We all want what's best for our schools. And my role and the role of Eastside Align is to help ensure that young people and the community members feel welcomed and empowered and heard and be a part of solutions. So I want to thank you for taking all, thank you for taking the time to listen to us, and we hope that we continue the partnership and we can get answers to some of the questions that are presented tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one more thing, sorry. There are some asks or commitments that the groups did come up with. There's three, and we can provide this to you as well. One, school board members and superintendent commit to meeting with the community quarterly or at least semi-annually in gatherings that are hosted by the community. These forums should be opportunities for honest dialogue, shared learning, and collaborative problem solving. So I know you all, we, you all do the key communicated network meeting, but community wants to host it in their own space and invite you all into it. So that's one of the things. Two, work alongside community members to develop a 90-day plan or a first-term plan that outlines your priorities and includes clear accountability checkpoints. This helps us understand your goals and gives the community a role in tracking progress and being a part of that. And most importantly, do the job that you were elected to do with integrity, transparency, and the students' interest at your, like, at the forefront. Thank you.
Zoni, Zori Amara, or, I can't understand the writing. Zori? I'm sorry, I couldn't quite understand your writing. Pronounce your last name, please.
Amara. Amara.
Amara, thank you.
Hello, my name is Zori. I'm a part of Concerned Parents, Student, and Illuminati who alongside our other community members have been actively trying to schedule meetings with this board outside of formal agendas, but our outreach hasn't been answered. We're here because we believe our voices matter and want stronger communication and partnership. So my question is, East St. Louis Senior High School has a graduation rate of 75% in 2023, below the state average of 87%. What specific policies and/or programs are in place to improve on-time graduation and prepare students for college, careers, or trades after high school?
Thank you, Wiz.
Janelle Reeves. Janelle Reeves.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jamila Reeves, and I'm here on behalf of a Youth Lead organization called Love, Leaving Our Voices Everywhere. And my question is, with the recent attempt by the Department of Education to take back $19 million in pandemic relief funds, which was later blocked by a federal judge, what plans are in place to protect our district from losing critical funding and ending programs such as Head Start, the Three-Year-Old Program, and Free School Lunch?
Thank you.
To the rep.
Greetings to each of you. I am Dr. Katina Lynette Rupert, and I am here as part of the coalition as well of those who have already come up, a member of NAACP, also a member and the chairman of our Advocate for Social Justice Committee with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And we are here to ask for accountability with the ratio of pay to students' performance. It is our responsibility as citizens to hold our elected official leaders accountable. We know it is your responsibility to hold district leadership accountable. How do you intend to evaluate the superintendent's performance? What criteria is or will be used? And have you considered what other districts around the country use as a criteria to evaluate their superintendents? Because as we've heard the young man here state, the graduation rates were very low. The AP classes, that they didn't have a choice in selecting. None of the students passed. And overall, the students are not performing at the level in which we know the city of champions can produce. We are so proud of our students who have graduated, right, and are doing well. We are equally proud of our athletes, but we want our students to perform academically at a higher rate. And we know it can be done because it has been done, and we wanted to see it be done once again. Thank you.
Okay, Annette Galladay.
Antoinette Galladay.
Yeah, David Coleman.
Yeah, and there's one more. It's Deja Coleman. Yes, you're welcome.
Good evening. I know I said this last time, but I did not think that I would have to be back before you all. Today, I stand with my two children who are not only being bullied in the district by staff, coaches, teachers, but they're also being harassed. This is my 16-year-old, who I stood with the last time I was here, who was punched in the face several times by one of your teachers. He also took a chair to the head by one of your students. None of them have been removed from your district. So as a parent, since I couldn't get help from the district because every time I came, I would hear the same thing, "We'll get back to you. We'll get back to you. We'll get back to you." And no one has yet to get back to me for two school years. I removed my child from the district. He's no longer a district student anywhere. He's now a college student at the age of 16. But for East St. Louis, he couldn't get past freshman year. So he's doing very well. Thank you. I appreciate it. Then I have my 12-year-old with me, who's in AP courses, I'm sorry, honors courses, who also did not have a choice. He was put in those courses. But my son is also a National All-American for East St. Louis School District. He's also doing football for East St. Louis. He's playing for the Junior Flyers. He does the Greyhounds. He's made the news. He's been honored in front of East St. Louis Mayor and City Hall. He's also working with the JTC New School that they're building around children that have very high academic reports. But yet, here we have my 12-year-old is playing track, throwing, shot putting, disc, it very well. And you have coaches saying that he can't participate in his sport because my 16-year-old is supporting his 12-year-old brother. But you all have a gentleman who used to coach for you all who went to jail for sexually assaulting a 15-year-old as he was a coach on your staff, still coming to track meets. Not only is he coming to the track meets, he's inside the school building with students. He was registered as a sex offender. But I keep being told that my son is a potential threat because he's autistic. Out of all of the people that show up to practice, my son is the only one being bullied, the only one being harassed, and the only one being asked to be removed from your premises. I've reached out and I've asked if my son is trespass. I was informed he's not. My son has not been at any East St. Louis Senior High School practices. My son goes to Lincoln Middle School. My son goes to Lincoln Middle School practice. We don't have a problem with any of these coaches. But for some reason, your high school coaches are continuing to bully a 16-year-old. I've removed him from you. He's not a problem for anybody. He doesn't speak to anyone. He sits on a bench and he supports his brother. But I'm being told he's not allowed on the premises. I know you guys don't answer questions, but at the same time, I also know you all don't get back to us. That's something that you tell us to shut us up and move us along. So I'm standing here as a parent, still of East St. Louis School District. My grandmother sat on this exact same board that you all are sitting on now, and I still can't get any help. I've dropped lawsuits that I should still have against the district because it's not about the money, it's the principle. And I still can't get any assistance from anybody. So I ask my question, when is it going to stop?
Can I have your name, please?
Antoinette Galladay. This is Mordecai Galladay, and this is Brandon Galladay, who they've also threatened to not let him play sports when he reaches. who they've also threatened to not let him play sports when he reaches high school because I will not stop advocating for my child. I'll never stop advocating.
Thanks a lot, Kelly.
Thank you.
We'll follow with you. Ms. Coleman.
Good evening. My name is Deja Coleman. I'm an alumni of East St. Louis Senior High School, currently attending Tennessee State University. And today, my question is about the conditions of the school. What do you see as the most urgent challenge challenging our schools? And what do you plan to do to address it? For example, safety, food quality, board broad access, and tutoring opportunities?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get the question?
Thank you.
We're not, uh.
I wasn't asking you what you respond. I was asking, did you get the question?
Yes, we got people taking notes.
Okay.
Okay, now it's executive session.
Administration doesn't have a reason. You wanna go?
I was waiting on your, on your discourse for the going area. Is it possible that I can do it now?
No. Sorry. Any executive session?
Administration doesn't have a reason to go into executive session.
All right, superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Need a motion to approve by unanimous vote. Action items 12A, 12B, 12C, 12D, 12E, 12F, 13A, 14A, 15A, 15B, 15C, and 15D. May I have a motion?
Make a motion. I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Walter Hood, second.
I'll make the second.
Second by Remy Dean, roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Mr. Lockett?
Yes.
Mr. Mickens?
Yes.
Mr. Ray, Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Sales?
Yes.
Roll call passes.
Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the following action items. 12A, reading of all resolutions by heading only. 12B, Resolution Number 052125 regarding Karen Bradford authorizing notice to remedy. 12C, purchase of student accident insurance renewal for policy number 11KT8182513, coverage from August 1st of 2025 through August 1st of 2026 in the amount of forty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That includes basic policy for sports coverage and required catastrophic coverage. 12D, work with compensation settlement agreement as presented. 12E, student discipline alternative placement of two students, student number 88914212, to safe schools for the remainder of this year as well as the entire 2025-26 school year, and that was for extreme defiance to staff personnel. Also, student number 88915647, for extreme defiance behavior to school personnel. Also, to be placed in safe schools for the remainder of this year as well as the entirety of the 25-26 school year. 12F, separation agreement presented, as presented. 13A, the financial report for the month of April 2025. 14A, personnel report, addendum and contracts, with the exception of 2A, the medical leave for John Vier, John Vier and Ray. That needs, that has been rescinded. 15A, builders and grounds report and addendum waiving the fee for 3BG use of premises request. 15B, the curriculum committee report and addendum. 15C, policy committee report, first reading only. And 15D, finance committee report and addendum. May I get a motion for approval?
I make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Willie Ray, second by Walter Hood. Roll call.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Mr. Lockett?
Yes.
Mr. Mickens?
Yes.
Ms. Sales?
Yes.
Mr. President, that does conclude my report, so.
Thank you. Motion carries. O business, E O business, N U business. Uh, next meeting, it's regular meeting, is July 17th, 2025. Got a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion.
I second.
Motion by Remy Dean, second by Willie Ray. Roll call.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Lockett?
Yes.
Mr. Mickens?
Yes.
Ms. Sales?
Yes.